For which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with living justice for all.
All right, is our first order is the approval of October 26th meeting minute.
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, I'll go through the roll. Is Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Public comment is we have nobody here for our public comment. And we have several public hearings today. The first one is an uneconomic trust in intent to transfer. It's the way it's listed. This is, is the town of Burwick holds money in trusts for several different entities. And these are trusts that have been built up over the years. And several of them were put in in the early 1900s. And there's not a lot there. One is the McHugh Lord Trust, then there's Lord's Cemetery Trust, and the Webster Cemetery Trust. All three trusts have a balance of $6,770.61, and they have earned interest of $9.83. So, is the plan, what we would like to do is take those funds and transfer them to one trust pursuant to 13 MRSA subsection 1223, and put that money to the Public Works Department to use them for the cemetery budget in accordance with the trust funds. You have anything to add to that, James?
Yeah, just that the interest is less than $10 for the three trusts combined. Obviously, there's no maintenance that can be done with that $10. So, it just, it makes sense to combine it and be able to utilize it and take the accounts off our accounts.
There's no, there's no rule or anything that has to be kept separate and be designated per specific cemetery?
I don't believe so.
That was, this was, a lot of it was written and preauthorized by legal. And they went through the right channels and they drafted up this language for us.
Okay.
We, we, we got permission from the Attorney General's Office to do this.
Oh, okay.
This is something that, you know, is I approached Lisa and Steve last year about it when I was looking through the town items and stuff. And, you know, as I said, there's nothing there. There's less than $10 in money coming in. It probably takes four times that just to, you know, keep it on the books. So, you know, there are other trust funds that are kept separate, though. The Evergreen Cemetery Trust Fund is kept separate. And, you know, the town, you know, maintains that and keeps track of it. But that is maintained by the Cemetery Trust, and, you know, the town doesn't touch that one.
Right. Okay. Then I'll make a motion that we approve and make, combine all the trusts together and transfer it to the Public Works Cemetery Budget.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, I'll go through the roll. Is Noah?
Yep.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. So, who's got that last? Thank you. Now we're doing license renewals, because these are all medical marijuana and cultivation facilities, it looks like. Can you bring us through them, James?
Sure. I believe, Lori, are you here for the 468 Portland Street hearing?
Hi, yeah, I am.
Did you have a comment you wanted to provide? Did you have a question or comment?
No, no, I didn't have anything to contribute. I was just really calling in the listen.
Okay, great. So, Ken did notify me. He had a water break at one of his other facilities, and he's not able to make the meeting tonight. So, I think we could close this hearing, and then we could just table the business till the next meeting and have an opportunity for him to reintroduce himself to the board, and you guys can ask him any questions. But he's just, he's just become active with the estate. It's an adult-use storefront and cultivation facility. They just opened up, but I've had no complaints, and Ken's been pleasant to work with. So, I think we can table it, and then...
Well, it is, is, these are all existing...
They are.
Existing things. These are all just renewals.
Correct.
Is, you know, I, I have, I've talked to the Chief of Police and the Captain about all of these facilities in the past. And both of them said that, truthfully, they have had no trouble at all, no complaints from anything. And that, you know, the only time they've ever had any trouble was there were false alarms on the security systems.
Yeah, I have no objection to moving forward with renewing licenses.
No.
None of these, you said that, and I apologize, I can't remember. But a couple of meetings ago, we had a young woman in here complaining about one of the facilities. It's not one of these three?
Bill's here for 398 School Street. We'll get into that. We have some updates for that.
Okay.
So, is Noah, is, I don't know if you have anything to say, but as I said, is, we haven't had any problems with any of these things. I have no problem moving forward with the renewal, even if...
I have no objection to move forward.
Anybody care to make a motion?
Is this just for the first one?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion that we renew the adult-use storefront nursery and cultivation facility?
468 Portland Street?
468 Portland Street, yeah, herbal pathways.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, I'll go through the roll. Is Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is yes. Up next is Medical Marijuana Cultivation Facility at 398 School Street.
So, Jen and I, we've made great traction lately on 398 School Street. There's been intermittent odor control issues, and we've been able to identify which unit it is, and it's not Mr. Stillfins. And we've identified the issue. The issue isn't carbon filtration's failing. It's they're opening the doors and letting the air out. That's, that's, working with the property owner. Jen's been in contact with him. She's actually going to get on site in the next week or so. And she's also going, she was in contact with Ms. Hughes lately and Mr. Wheat, who brought up the concerns. So, she's talked with them this week, and she's going to get out on site to take pictures for the lighting issues and hope to get a resolution on that.
What was the feedback from the residents when you talked to them?
Just that the, there was the odor issue, but now it is gone, and that it does pop up intermittently where it doesn't exist, but then some days it is overbearing. So, just, and trying to get to the bottom of the lighting issue of where exactly the light fixture is and where it's pointing, and if it is indeed intruding on the property line. That's the next piece.
So, do we have an ETA of when they're going to get some of this resolved?
The goal would be, I mean, by the time there's a next 398 School Street application that we have, and which will be soon to have that resolved.
Yeah, because as Linda mentioned, there's a couple of weeks back, a couple of meetings back, is we had people in here complaining, and, you know, they're talking about not just the lights and the smell, but also that there appeared to be other activities going on there after hours. Is, you know, there was no rumor of somebody living there, you know, and things like that. So, I haven't seen anything to convince me otherwise yet.
Yeah, it took us, it took us a little while. We sent, I sent two letters to the property owner, and we sent a few emails. But now, just recently, he's reached out to us, and I really feel like we are making traction. I mean, if we're at the same point the next time, I mean, it might already be to that point where you haven't seen enough progress on this situation. So, I would, I understand that.
So, is, just to be clear, the license that we're looking at right now, the Medical Marijuana Cultivation Facility at 398, that is not the whole Raymond Place facility?
There's just one tenant in the building.
One tenant in there. So, is...
Are they the tenant that had the issues with the door and the smell?
No, different unit.
All right.
You know, I, I, you know, you know, is, James mentioned working with Jen McCabe, is our code enforcement on this. And is, my understanding is that the owner of the facility hasn't been exactly pleasant to deal with, hasn't been, you know, responsive sometimes. I hate to hold anybody's license hostage. However, is, this has been an ongoing issue with Mr. Springer, I guess. And we haven't had any real resolution on it. Is, you know, every time I've talked to Jen McCabe, our code enforcement, is always, there's something else, you know, putting it off, putting it off, putting it off. And so, I'm having a hard time with this one.
I think it's, one of the thoughts I had was, we could do a site walk and take a, I'm not sure, Bill, how you feel about, I know some growers have issues with going inside the buildings, but walking around the site, at least to see the, at least see your unit from the outside, confirm there's no odor issues, confirm there's no lighting issues, and be able to...
Well, the lighting issue wouldn't be his problem. You know, that's not his problem. And the other people living on the site or doing work after hours isn't his problem. That's why I say I hate to, you know, hold him dumb up. Is, how long have you been operating over there?
Four and a half years. I was one of, the first one.
Yeah, you were one of the originals, right?
Yeah.
That's, see, I, I struggle with the same thing. Is here's a person who is leasing the space, is doing the appropriate procedures, but, so I, I just, I have difficulty denying their renewal because the landlord isn't. Is there other options for us, and this isn't the topic right now, but is there other options that we can do for the landlord? Because, you know, I see what you're saying about, well, if we don't approve this, this will squeeze the landlord, but that's not fair to the business either.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not in the...
I don't want to do that.
Somebody who's doing the right thing.
Exactly. That's, that's what I'm saying is, but, but to further your point is, when are we going to get an update, and when is something going to be done?
Is, so, is, is...
I, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. You had something to say?
Yeah, I, I was just thinking, you know, why don't Jen come over? There's her and James, and they can check out the unit. You know, I know mine. I got everything up to...
Yeah. Is, yeah, I, like I said, I don't want to, I don't want to punish you people, you know, for being, doing what's right. But we need, we need more than just lip service from Mr. Springer.
Yeah, and the directive was clear from the last hearing, but it'll be on Jen and I at this point to make sure that, I mean, I could even say, you know, if we hold up, see if we can even hold up getting on the agenda until saying, look, there's active issues here that need to be sorted out before we even consider another public hearing.
So, a question for you, James, is, is there a, is there a master license that he owns to control the whole facility?
It's all the individual license.
So, there's nothing, nothing we could do by withholding a license from him?
Right. It would be more...
Because it's just a regular business to him. He's just Lisa's face.
It'd be more land use violations at that point.
All right. Oh, I don't want to, anybody else have any? I want to make a motion. We approve the relicensing Medical Marijuana Cultivation Facility at 398 School Street.
Do we have a second?
Aye, second.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, I'll go through the roll. Is Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. So, all right. So, then it brings us to Medical Marijuana Cultivation Facility and Marijuana Caregiver Retail Storefront. The cultivation facility is 1 Blackmore Road, 398 School Street, and Tuboe Street, Main Cana Connection.
So, the 1 Blackmore Road property, just as a backstory, that's another one of those, we had a couple of properties that were approved as agriculture. So, they're non-conforming use, but it's a legal non-conforming use. Sent out a butter notices, didn't receive any complaints. And Tuboe Street, that's the storefront that's downtown. I have, again, sent out a butter's notices. And, I mean, we had, I mean, one issue was, we had parking issues six or seven months ago. And between Bill and the property owner, I think, I mean, I haven't heard any issues since, so those were addressed. But no, you know, no police issues for the storefront downtown. I did make an error. The 398 School Street, we're going to cross that part out because that was the previous applicant.
Okay. I thought there was a...
That's a good question.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions on this one?
Nope.
I'll make a motion to review the license at 1 Blackmore Road and Tuboe Street, our Main Cana Connection.
I second it.
All right. Any further discussion? Is, I'll just make one comment. Is, you know, when the storefront down here opened up, you know, I was approached by a lot of people that, you know, it was going to be the worst thing in the world and everything. And other than the parking issues that we had on Rochester Street, is I haven't heard of anybody having any complaints about it. So, is, other than that, I'll go through the roll. Is Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is yes. Thank you, everybody. I will close our public hearings. All right. Reports of committees, we have none. Department reports, none. Appointments, other guests, none. Unfinished business, the transfer station fees. Is, at our last meeting, we got this schedule sent to us. Is we have a chance to review it. Any questions?
Just a comment. So, these, James, these fees are based on the cost, the cost to get rid of the trash that's put there?
And I think the idea is to become more comparative to our neighbors.
I'm not worried about our neighbors. I'm just worried about the cost that it costs us.
Oh, absolutely.
To, you know, to dispose of this stuff. I don't, we shouldn't be looking to make money off it, but we should be covering our costs.
Yeah, I think it's...
Well, we don't, we probably don't cover our costs, even with an increase.
Okay.
If I recall from a couple, a couple meetings back, actually, I think one of my first with Steve, when we were talking about this, I think this kind of came up with Jody coming on board and talking about the transfer station. And I think he realized that we were actually taking a hit over there with some of the extra stuff that was getting dumped, dumped off, whether that was more people cleaning up the house, being home from COVID, or whatever it was. But it sounded like there was a lot more that went out that we ended up paying than, you know, we didn't see the cost.
I'm sure during COVID, there was all kinds of people remodeling and cleaning and...
Yeah, exactly.
And all that kind of stuff. I do have a follow-up question. Is, it used to be that we had, I mean, because this is, you know, you bring this stuff in, you got to pay for it individually. We used to do a week cleanup once a year that residents could come and dump stuff off for a week. It used to be that they went around and picked it up, and then that took too long and was too costly. So, now it was just a week that you could bring it yourself. Do we not do that anymore? I don't recall doing that last year.
What we had in place before was one Saturday a month, you could come and dump. And what was happening was, everybody waited till that Saturday and would fill 10 dumpsters. And then, you know, we're stuck with all that cost. Is, yeah, when I first came on the board, is back on the board, we talked about this. And one of the others, like Brian O'Connor, has a camp up in Greenville, Maine. And he said up there, they actually have a waste station at the transfer station. So, if you're dumping stuff off, you're weighed before and after, and you get paid by the pound.
Wow.
That's how they do it.
Yeah.
So, they really recoup their fees.
Does the town have, and, does the town have any, I'm kind of going around in a circle here, but does, we have a lot of elderly residents that also live in Burwick, and fees like this are significant for them. Is there any kind of resident assistance or anything like that? Where somebody could come in and get a waiver for one day if, like, a house was being, you know, you had to move an elderly person out, and you'd been a longtime resident? I just, I just think that, you know, for most of us working and whatnot, these fees seem reasonable and that. But we do have, you know, some elderly people where, you know, hey, I've got to get rid of a recliner that maybe, that's, you know, these, it's a lot for them. Is there a process in place? Does the town have a process in place?
I don't...
No, we don't. Nothing like that, you know. Is, I, I, I understand what you're saying, but as I...
I'm not saying on a regular basis, but what happens if you've got an elderly person you have to go? Is there something like, can the town manager waive it for a day, you know, and is a process or something like that? If you're trying to help an elderly resident out or, or something?
I, I mean, I wouldn't mind trying to workshop some language then. Like, I wouldn't mind, on a case-by-case basis, if people come in and, if that's something we want to, I wouldn't mind doing that.
Yeah, I just, I'm not saying to set up anything regular and things like that, but I just think that we should have some, you know, we do have some elderly things. And when you say, oh, it's just a few dollars more, for them, that few dollars is significant. And if they really have a situation where we want them to help clean them up, can we do that? And maybe later on, like you said, we could just have a simple thing where we add some language down the road to be more helpful for them.
You know, we do, we do have a policy in place. Say, if a resident is having somebody else, you know, using an out-of-state truck or something like that, you know, they can come to the town hall and get a one-day pass. We have those types of things. But we don't have anything, you know, necessarily in place. But, you know, wouldn't be bad to look at, you know, check it out.
Yeah.
Is, you know, is, so, but...
But as far as, I don't have any issues specifically to this. I'm just, you know, I just think it affects that population a little bit more, and if we can do something, just make some language change.
Something like a separate senior price list for certain things that might be getting unloaded?
Is there a discount for senior citizens over the age of 65 or 70? Is it that? Could we do something like that? You know, and maybe not, you know, waive it completely, but just maybe, you know...
That might just be the...
You know, a 10% discount if you're, you know, you're a resident over the age of 65?
Oh, for next year, I can.
I, I just think that we should, we should help out our long-term residents, that's all. And these costs are, you know, hit them the hardest.
Other than that, is there any reason not to vote on this tonight?
No.
Any other questions about it? All right. Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the transfer station fees as revised. When do they become effective? I'm sorry. Let me make the motion first. But I can't make the motion until I know when they're effective.
We can make them, maybe the cleanest thing to do is to make them just as of the new year.
January 1st.
I was going to say, first of the year would make sense to me. I know Linda, you know, asked me at least a 30-day notice. And I think at this point, yeah, we just say 2022.
That way, people, we can put a sign up at the transfer station, and then people know in advance. It doesn't surprise anyone. So, again, I will make a motion to approve the transfer station fees, effective 1-1-2022.
I second that.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll go through the roll. Is Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. That brings us to our town manager report.
First, I wanted to recognize some outstanding efforts over this past month. First, Patty, the week before the election, sometimes she was by herself, holding the fort down, and was able to prepare for an election with over 2,000 voters. But that was ran flawlessly. So, I think that speaks very highly to her skills and the support staff and election workers she has. So, great, great job, everybody, on that. I also want to give a shout out to Jen McCabe. She's really filled a big gap for when I left the planning department. She'd fill in doing minutes, administrative stuff, taking questions, and was willing and able to jump in, no questions asked. And she helped with even stepping in for customer service. And speaking of planning department, a very warm welcome to Tammy Bellman. She's been here for two days and has picked up seamlessly where I left off a couple of months ago. She's already brought forward several procedural improvements, and I enjoyed chatting with her. She's got a passion for planning, a passion for municipal government. She was an admin assistant to select board and planning board, Board of Appeals. She wore all kinds of hats in her past positions. So, I'm really looking forward to seeing her and Lee Jay and the planning board and to see what they can do together. Also wanted to recognize Starr for her efforts in the water department. She's recently taken on a larger workload and responsibility, and she's been doing a great job. I could go on, I could keep going on, but in the interest of time, I'll just, I think Jody's doing a great job helping the town look awesome. He's, he did the boiler room doors and roof on the heat pumps. He did the roof on the heat pumps as a weekend project. He's real crafty and just, he's an awesome addition to the team. Trump and Treat was a great success. My son, Luca, really enjoyed it. He gave his first experience with candy. Angela in the rec department did a fantastic job. And again, I can go on forever. So, anyone that didn't mention doesn't mean I don't appreciate the work that you're doing. Everyone's doing an awesome job.
It sounds like you got a really good crew there, just really, yeah.
Absolutely. I enjoy working with everybody. Now, less fun, we're definitely over 100 employees, which means we're going to be subject to either the vaccine requirements or the option for testing. Linda and I and a few others are attending a workshop tomorrow to kind of go over what that looks like for us. In the meantime, we'll start looking at what the costs are for testing, but I'll start, I'll start workshopping some language and look at our pandemic policy that we're working on anyways.
Yep.
Tomorrow will be, if it's okay with the board, will be closed tomorrow. There's maintenance for the sewer. You'll notice that they've been doing sewer, and they are pushing stuff out through the pipes that are clogged. But at the same time, they're pushing the stuff out, they're lining the pipes. So, it's a much-needed project.
Much needed.
So, are you just closing down the whole town hall tomorrow?
Whole town.
That's probably a good idea.
Yeah, it's going to not smell so great, and the bathrooms will not be usable.
Yeah, the facilities won't be usable. You can't run any water down because they have to dry the pipes. They have to clean the pipes, dry the pipes, and then put the epoxy in and let that dry. So, it's a three-stage process. So...
That's all I got.
Yep.
Good.
All right. Any questions for James?
No, I will say that I don't know who did the art work out front, but that is a creative way to notify them. Citizens that, I showed up after dark. I noticed it when I was walking up. I, you know, any way that we can get the word up.
That was Julie, my deputy. She does a great job of that.
That's awesome.
All right. Selectment communications. I don't have any official communications. I just have a couple of things I want to talk about. Is, is, one is, you know, James said that the town hall will be closed tomorrow. said that the town hall will be closed tomorrow, but it'll also be closed on Thursday for Veterans Day. And the veterans will be holding their memorial service up at their memorial park off of 236 at 11 o'clock. And sounds like it'll be good weather this year, so that's always good. Other than that, I have nothing else, you know, has, you know, other than, you know, typical people complaining about things, but nothing important.
Yep, yep. I will say just too, as an added comment, I stopped in, you know, to vote and to, you know, to look around. And I thought the election went very smooth because I came after work. So I anticipated getting hit with a big line and whatnot, but it was moving really quickly. And so I thought that was good. And, and I know that my, my nieces and my, and nephew there went to the chunker treat and they just loved it. They thought it was just really great. So again, just backing up your kudos is, those are comments that are being made to me is, hey, you guys did a great job with that. I'm like, you know, rec department is just in the last year and a half has done some tremendous stuff. That's really being noticed.
Yep, agreed.
All right. That brings us to accounts payable. We have a payroll warrant number 26 for November 4th, 2021, the amount is $68,812.70. We have a count payable warrant number 27 for November 9th, 2021. And this one is a big one, is $961,738.35. And then we have payroll warrant number 28 for November 10th, 2021, for the amount of $71,172.62. And I'll make a motion that we pay our bills.
Second the motion.
No further discussion. I'll go through the roll. Is Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. All right. That brings us to new business and a renewal of armed premises liquor license for Corner Point Brewing with Jamie Blood. Do you know if Jamie's going to be here tonight or?
I don't see him, but I can-
Yeah, go ahead.
This is, this isn't even a, a local license. This is what the state needs for, for his state license. So it's, it requires a local approval for a state license. I, I mean, it's similar to the, you know, past hearings. I don't have any complaints or concerns to bring forward that would prevent us from renewing his license.
So just a semantics question. So you said this is a state license. Does that mean the state gets all the money from the license?
I believe so.
That's something that Patty and I have talked about actually is implementing a liquor license. And it's-
Sounds good to me.
Makes sense.
Yeah, this is, this is a renewal. He came by, you know, last year, same thing. Is nothing much has changed. I have heard that he is thinking about expanding a little bit, but hasn't done that yet. Is, and other than that, everything is status quo.
Yeah. I make a motion, we approve their renewal license for Corner Point Brewing.
In a second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Thought I'll go through the roll. Is Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. I need before I forget it and Patty has to come back and get me. All right, memorial field expansion. Has he expanded on that?
Absolutely. Our legal has developed the deed, purchase and sales and real estate tax forms. We're also working on the title insurance. After the PNS is signed, the Cormiers have one thing to tie up, and then we should be able to set a date for closing sometime in December. I just need a motion for approval to sign the PNS with the Cormiers to get moving. Again, the, the terms were $100,000 for three acres.
There's Angela. Hey, Angela.
Okay.
Yeah, this is something that, you know, I've, I've been working on for three years now. As COVID kind of interrupted it. And I wish they'd done three years earlier, it would have been much cheaper.
Yeah, probably would have been.
It would have been, but, but the Cormiers have been, you know, they've been helpful, they've been easy to work with. Is their, their only real request now is that, you know, once we start using the facility, you know, in any meaningful way, we have a fence between our property and theirs now. It should, it'd be just a straight line fence and-
Seems reasonable, yeah.
So, yeah, it's just worth to say, that's not an unreasonable ask.
Yeah.
Right.
Is, so, anything you'd like to add, Angela? No problem.
No, I just wanted to be a part of it just so I could hear everything that was happening. I'm at basketball right now, so I'm kind of in a corner.
So, yeah, you know, is, is, we have no immediate plans for this property. You know, it was, it was talked about with the, the master plan and the possibility, but is, is the biggest thing is over the next, you know, six to eight months is just getting in there and figure out exactly what we want to do with it. So, is, um-
Yeah, exactly. There's just, there's a lot of stuff that we can do with it. You know, we've talked about trails too, and really utilizing that area for snowshoeing and cross-country skiing and, you know, expanding the fields as well. There's tons of potential. We just gotta figure out which way we want to go with it.
Right.
Okay.
So we need a motion to okay the town manager to sign off on the purchase and sales agreement? That'd be sufficient?
Yep.
Do we have a motion from Noah? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll go through the roll. Is Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. All right.
Thank you, guys.
No problem. Thank you.
Bye, guys.
All right. Personal property account write-off. Berwick Storage and Supply LLC. Boy, if, if Mark was here, he'd have something to say.
Well, this one, it's a new owner who doesn't have the equipment that was charged to them. That's, so my recommendation is to, to write off the amount of $970.72. Because again, it's a different, different owner who didn't have that personal equipment that they were charged for.
I'm sorry, I don't have the background on this. So it's a new owner, so they were charged a fee for having equipment there?
Well, it is what it is, what happened, what happened was, is the, the previous owner had equipment there that fell, fell under the personal property tax.
Oh, okay.
Not, not for, not the, the, not the property tax, but the personal property, the equipment, that kind of stuff in there. And when he sold it, he must have taken that equipment with him. And so now that, that equipment isn't there, but it was kept on the bill that was sent to him.
The tax, I see.
So, is, uh-
Okay.
That's my understanding of it.
No, that's well said.
Okay, all right. That makes, okay.
Yeah, is, uh, the, the, is, is, the previous owner had the equipment, the latest one doesn't.
Right, so he just doesn't want the tax on it. I, I see. Okay.
So.
Anybody else have any?
No, that makes, that makes sense to me. Thanks for clearing them. Yeah, I guess I'll, I'll make a motion to write off the account with Berwick Storage and Supply. About the amount of $921. I'm hoping to change ones. Forty-four cents.
All right. I'll second it.
There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Not, I'll go through the roll. Is Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is yes. Personnel policy revisions.
So this personnel policy update, there's four, for the bigger ticket items, including the smaller ones, the grammatical changes. The big one is the PTO, paid time off replaces sick and vacation time for most employees.
What pages?
I think it's 715, maybe? Did I get that one right?
Yeah, this is what we had talked about before, correct? We went through that and changing the, the personal-
815.
It doesn't break out how much pay time they get?
It's on the bottom of the 8.15, years of service, outwork week, that's-
Yeah, that's 8.15. I'm saying up here with a full-time, regular full-time employees, up top. It says paid time off, but it doesn't say how much they, how much they get per year. What's their annual PTO?
You approved a PTO policy when that first-
Right. So what I'm asking is how much PTO? Do they get two weeks a year, 15 days? Do they get 20 days?
I'm just looking for the accrual rate.
The thing is, there's hours earned per week.
Oh, I see it, yeah. Page 32.
Okay.
That has the accrual rate.
That's what I'm looking for, okay.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't see the page numbers, but thanks, Mike. Yeah, page 32.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, okay, yeah, that makes-
Luckily Patty put this together for, for somebody else that I took, so, you know, I'm all set here.
Well, I have a question. I just wanted to see, so for those, so people are changing to PTO, which I understand, I think that's good. It gives people more flexibility. But what about the people who currently have accruals on the books? Where does that go?
I think that's all sorted out through the policy. So we've already switched with the, because we adopted the PTO policy. And this just puts it in the personnel policy.
So did we pay them off for the time they had?
Yeah, there was, there was some, there was some, there was a transfer from the sick and vacation time was true, like, we didn't, so my, I had sick and vacation time, and then it was put on the books as a lump sum of PTO.
So nobody lost any time switching to PTO?
Right, right.
That's what I'm asking.
That's my understanding here. There might be some exceptions with, I, I forget exactly how it happened, where we had some extended discussions on maximal allowable, and I think that was all sorted through. I think there's 720 hours, so I don't believe anyone lost time.
That's, that's what I'm saying, is there's just, employee can't come back and say, well, you switched to PTO and I lost 20 hours of sick time.
Right.
It was transferred over.
Right.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, and if I'm right, I think this is something that they did last year before we even came, came on. I think this is, this is going for the personnel policy that we're looking at now, right?
Right.
Yeah.
I, I think, yeah.
Yeah, because I, that's what I mean, is I remember reading this beforehand, and it was a change right around that time, just before. So I remember going back and looking at it, and now I, I just was trying to make sure that nobody lost anything changing over. I think PTO is, is definitely the way to go. I just-
Other ones, there's a-
The board, the board approved that policy in May of 2021, so before-
Yep.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, that's what I thought was-
Yeah, and this was basically just changing the language from vacation sick to PTO.
Okay.
The other piece is adding Juneteenth as a holiday. And then there's a couple of, a couple of technical ones. Since we switched to PTO, more of the changes is requiring at least 80 hours of PTO to be able to gift time.
Mm-hmm.
And then the other one is when we do retire, rehires, that we have, we put in a week of requirement between the retire and rehire.
Yep.
Because the, the time has to be completely off the books.
Right. You have to go through a payroll cycle.
Yep.
Yeah.
And James, we need a, a vote from the board about the Juneteenth holiday because the board said to wait for the contract negotiations, but I was told today that you were going to ask them to approve that holiday for all employees because it did be added to the contracts.
And that's, yeah, and it will, yeah, and it, and just, yeah, on the, to piggyback on that, that's something that we have, will be added to the contracts.
Yeah, so we need a, a motion from the board that they approve the Juneteenth holiday for town and ward speed.
Got it.
We have two separate issues.
Yeah.
So, all right. Any more questions on the personnel policy revisions? If not, I'm looking for a motion to accept or reject.
Make a motion to accept the personnel policy revisions. I think it looks like 11-1-2021.
Yep. I'll make a second the motion.
Motion and a second. As I'll go through the-
Will be effective today, 11-9.
Okay.
11-9, okay. All right, I'll go through the roll. Is Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. You want us to vote on the Juneteenth thing now also, or should that wait, or?
Is it part of the policy manual?
I'm sorry?
Is it, is it part of the policy manual? Is it listed in here? Because if it is, then didn't we just vote on it? If we voted on the policy manual and it's included in here, didn't we just vote on it?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Are you, are you okay with that?
I am.
I'll be the official, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to adopt the federal Juneteenth holiday. Is that, do we need that?
We might as well make sure.
Make Patty's life easier.
Okay, I second the motion.
Thank you.
All right.
I, I didn't mean to throw you off, Patty, sorry.
No, that's okay. I was just totally needed it, so.
I'll make an official motion, that's all.
We have a, a motion in a second to adopt the federal holiday of Juneteenth. Is any further discussion? Thought I'd go through the roll. Noah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. All right. And now the election results. You're up, Patty.
Yes, we, let's see, we had official numbers for town and state were 1982 votes. It was passed for those to the school. We had a total of 1985 votes, and that failed. So with that said, we've got three absentee ballots, only contain the school ballot, and they elected not to vote for the town or state election. So, yeah, we had good, well, all day long, it was very busy, it went well. The earliest election, I was out here at 9 o'clock, so that was really good.
Yeah, that's a good one for you.
Yeah, yeah, good numbers. So that was nice to see.
Well, thank you, Patty. And all your team, you did an excellent job as usual.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Now, is these trying times, it certainly is nice to have something run smoothly.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And people were great. They followed the X's on the sidewalk, and that seems to work.
Yep. Yep, and, uh.
We started that with the presidential, and it worked, so it's good.
All right, all right.
Thank you.
Uh, we have no quick claim deeds, abatements, second public comment. Uh, we have no executive session tonight. Now, other business and non-agenda items, anybody have anything else they want to bring up?
Yeah, I just want to say something about the election that we just had here. Um, one, great turnout, very happy with that, um, I'm sure the, um, the Berwick voting group is very happy with it as well, and they did a good job making sure there was, you know, visibility on it. Um, Patty did a great job as well for, for, for running very smooth, you know, most people were in and out, and it was not a, not a chore or problem at all. Um, but also, we had a lot of, we had two major things, we had the question one for the power line, for the, for the CMP, you know, corridor, um, they spent more money on the no campaign than the yes campaign by a long shot, and it still was defeated. So I think that should tell us, you know, money can't just buy elections, that's a good thing to still know in this, you know, time and place. Um, and the other thing is that, for the people that always complain that everything just gets passed and approved and nobody ever pays attention to what's going on, the school, um, renovations were, were voted down, and not just by a vote, but by, by a law.
Yeah, significant.
Your vote does count, it does matter, it is important, and now the school board is going to have to go back to the draw board and try again with something, you know, probably a little more modest, you know? So I just, you know, want to draw attention to the fact that, you know, votes do matter, and it is important that we get out and vote, and money doesn't buy elections, you know? So they're important things to know in this time and place in America, so.
Well said.
Yes, good point.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other business? If not, one motion tonight.
Uh, make a motion to adjourn.
In a second?
Second.
All those in favor said yes.
Good night.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night, guys.
Good night.
Thank you.
I'll be there tomorrow or Thursday.
I'm all set with the, with Nora, thank you though.
Oh, you're ready?
They're closed, they're closed tomorrow, remember?
And they're closed Thursday, too.
Right.
Oh, that's right. I'll drop this by you on Friday, guys.
Yes.